I hereby call to order this meeting of the Board of Education for District 200. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call a roll?
Mrs. Crabtree?
Here.
Mrs. Erickson?
Here.
Mr. Gambiani?
Here.
Mr. Hanlon?
Here.
Mr. Matheson is absent. Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mr. Gromit?
Here.
Mr. Frouting, would you please read this in the closing reasons?
Plenely just to I, the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I hereby ask for a motion on the second to suspend the rules in return to workshop setting.
So moved.
Do with that, Mrs. Crabtree?
Correct.
Seconded by Mr. Hanlon. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call a roll?
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Gromit?
Yes. The motion to adjourn to a workshop setting has passed. First item on the agenda is instruction. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, I'm gonna introduce Mrs. Alquist, our superintendent for educational services. The Board has historically at this September committed a whole meeting, gotten an update or a report on student learning and a number of our key student learning targets, so pleased this evening to have Mrs. Alquist provide that update for you. So, ma'am, over.
All right. Thank you for this opportunity. My report has four parts to it. We're gonna talk through some of the student assessment data. We're gonna talk about the focus for our fit learning environments for this year, go over the school improvement process, and then end with the board goal for student learning. So, you've seen this all before. This is what we're all working on. At the heart of our business is there in the middle where we talk about our learning environments. And as Dr. Schuler and I went around to all the schools and made presentations, we were careful to talk about how really are we getting there? Because that PLC continues to be that driving force. Once, all the time, when Julie and I will go through and look at the data, and we find a grade level that is doing really well, we call up the principal, say, "Okay, what program, what?" And they're like, "Well, it's really just that the PLC works really well together. They're spending time, they're collaborating, they're working on that." So, PLCs continue to drive us forward. Again, this is our vision for a learning environment, and there's a lot of important things in there. But the easiest of which to measure is the mastery of standards and skills, and that's what I'm going to spend some time on here. We measure that with the state tests with PARC. They're not officially back yet, but we do look at that. We have our own district assessments that we use. We have our district dashboard. And then, we spend a lot of time going into in-depth analysis by schools, by subgroups, by areas, and looking at what all of that would mean. We could be here for hours if I did all of that, so I will be giving an overview, but please know that that's an important part of what we do. So, this is our dashboard. It's super busy. You don't have to read the things on here because my slides after this will go one by one. So, this is our students from K through 7 with our own district math assessments. And we had our initial baseline of 65. We're at 66. That is exactly the 66 where we were last year. I want to highlight some of the things that we will be doing to improve upon that. Our math coaches, we just started that last year, and our emphasis was at first and second grade. We had that place value. A number sense working that is going to continue and to be working on this. We revised a lot of the standards in grades five and grade six, because if you recall, we had pushed some of the Common Core standards from the grade levels above that down, and we're making that a little bit more complicated than perhaps it needed to be in getting students ready for algebra. So, we rewrote parts of that, and now our students in grades five and six, along with their teachers, will have more time to cover the Common Core standards that need to be done. And we're already getting some great initial stories back regarding that. We're also personalized math instruction and practice at grades three through five by purchasing Dreambox for all of our students, and that is going well. We have thousands of them on it every day. The last piece is really a credit to Julie O. So, we are going in and providing targeted professional development to principals and to schools and grade levels that need it. Based on the way that Julie can put our data together and then predict off of their demographics, off of their student groups, how they should perform, we're able to see not just whether a school was a couple percentage points higher than they were last year, but also to look at their demographics and say, "You're underperforming or overperforming." Then Julie and I are differentiating our support for those schools by going in more frequently, working hand in hand on the school improvement plans, doing extra class term walkthroughs and observations, so that we can really help those schools improve in math. This is reading. Again, this is our district assessment. Our initial baseline was 61, and that was last year. We went up five percentage points from last year in this area. We're gonna continue to build on what was making those successes, or working with the reading framework coaches, working with the middle schools, on all of that. Last year, if you recall, the focus was on phonics. This year, it's still on phonics, but it's more the spelling and the encoding versus decoding. We have some brand-new reading interventions at elementary and reading and middle school, which are going to help with that, some of which were funded by grants. And then, we're continuing our work with academic vocabulary as well. The graduation rate, and I wanted to emphasize that this is Julie's numbers so far. The official state hasn't released this, but Julie's usually pretty accurate. So, this is where we're headed with those pieces. I wanted to really highlight some of the work that the high schools have done to get the coding correct on that. The freshman on track to graduate, if you look at this, then remember that the state criteria is having at least 10 credits with no Fs in a core course. Yay. Last year, we were at 94.9. We kept up with that. That's well ahead of where the 2018 goal was. Average ACT. Down at the bottom, you can see the different grade levels that we go through. I was interested to find out, what if you just took the students that were here for all of our high school experience? So, we looked at those students that were here for the eighth grade explore, and if you just take those out, what do you think the average is? It's 24.2. If you just have our students that were here for all of their high school experience. So, that mobility piece and some of our students that move in does cause our aggregate to be somewhat lower.
Can you say that again? So, students who move in?
So, if you just look at the students that were here for that eighth grade explore test, and then we looked, so they were here from the middle, beginning of eighth grade all the way through where they took the ACT, and just took those students, the aggregate is 24.2. Where, if you took all of our students, including those that moved into our high schools after eighth grade, it runs it down to 23.6. This next slide is a compilation of lots of data. We have our own district assessments that I've already reviewed, our PARC scores and where we're at with that. Want to caution you a little bit on the new SAT test and what all that looks like. The state hasn't yet published what the cut score is. So, this is what SAT is seeing as percent college ready, but we're not sure what the state is going to set as their cut scores for that. So, that number may change dramatically depending on what the state decides. And then, if you recall, it, Dr. Schuler's State of the Schools, he talked about this study that was done across many decades, trying to have an aggregate between IGET, ISAT, the new PARC, the new revised PARC, all of those things. And we had quite the celebration where we had gone up in reading, even though our demographics at that time changed to make it a little more challenging to have all students reading at a grade level. So, we were really excited about that, and it was fun to see the staff where Dr. Schuler went to each school and shared that.
Faith, can I interrupt you just a moment?
Sure.
Could you go back to the ACT slide, please?
Sure.
So, are you suggesting that 2014 through 2015, we go from 23.7 to 23.6? Is, are you suggesting that that is because we have more mobile students, or is that the summation of that?
We have slightly more mobility, but we had mobility in 2014 as well. So, while we've had a little bit of an increase in mobility, I'm not saying that that's all that difference.
So, then, for four years, basically, the number's been flat. The achievement's been pretty much flat. Is that a fair statement?
It's hard to go up dramatically with your ACT scores, but yes.
Faith, I have a question.
Sure.
So, you mentioned with SAT that the state needs to come out with cut scores. Isn't that a nationally norm test, and why would the state come in, and did they do the same thing with ACT?
The state will say, "Well, here's what we think will be proficient in Illinois", and they can say that, so it wouldn't be as our students' scores were sent out to colleges that it affects differently because of Illinois. But because that's the new Illinois high school state test, they can set what they're going to say is proficient.
So, someone who, so California could have a different cut score than Illinois?
Correct. All right. This was our reading slide. We'll go on to math, where here's what our district assessments, again, the PARC. Again, the same caution with SAT as before. And then, our math scores, the study that Dr. Schuler talked about, they did the same as math, and that's not as rosy. We actually have declined in math over the last few years. If you think about the resources that we put into reading, we have reading teachers at every elementary school. We have reading teachers that support that. We've done a lot of professional development with reading. It's just only recently that we've begun that intensive work for math. So, I'm very optimistic that those scores will go up in math now that we have more math support. Okay, this is seniors ready for college and career. And just to remind you what that is, that's those percentage of students that have a 20 or higher on ACT. And the yellow over here is how North has performed over the last five years, and you move to South with the orange, and then the district aggregate is blue. If, again, you look at seniors that are ready for college and career, and look at those students that were there for all of their high school career, then we're at 78% instead of 72%. So, the mobility factor is having an effect on our scores. Yes.
So, I was studying this chart, and it's kind of interesting. North versus South, I think it's 2015, 2016, or North, 2015 to 2016 dropped, and then bounced right back up. And then, it's South, it went from, it went up in that 2015 to 2016 year. Is that largely just a particular class?
You do have fluctuations in what, you know, as a whole class moves through, you may have a class that's much higher, a class that's much lower, and that certainly plays a big impact. When we look at growth added, which is the next couple of slides, we'll see if you have an incoming class that was lower, they're not as likely to make as much growth, and that continues. We can start seeing that in elementary all the way through. This slide is really busy. Let me explain what this is. So, this is North at the top, South at the bottom. And what the bars represent are the different subjects. So, you have four categories: English, math, reading, and science. And this is the growth added, where students were at in eighth grade when they came in, and then where they went to by the time they took the ACT. We spent a lot of time in the district having discussions around the achievement gap between our non-low income and our low-income students, and here is where you see that dramatic gap. And we're working toward that, but as you can see, there's still lots of room for improvement and room to work on. This, to your point, you can see that classes come in higher and lower in different subject areas, and that has an impact later on. What we want to see is the eighth grade scores going up each year as you go through, and for most subjects, that's true. In English, we see some decline.
Faith, based on the sheets of few, it's multiple data sources, you know, there was a big difference in reading versus math, whereas if you look at that chart you were just on, the next one, the two middle counts in math and then reading, there's not that big a difference. So, how can we explain that?
Two very different tests that that is based off of. This is ACT. The other that we're just starting is SAT. PARC asks questions very differently than ACT does, so they measure different levels of rigor, and they also focus on different areas. Where reading, you've got two. You've got English and reading in PARC that's kind of combined. So, there's also that piece that you're doing both of those things at once. But each different test does come with different outcomes.
So, I guess the thing there is don't overreact to just one data point?
Correct. Julie and I say all the time, triangulate, triangulate, triangulate. Look at multiple sources. Okay, I've been warming you up for the busiest slide of the night. Okay. I think I'd better come over for this one. Okay. So, this is what we look at all the time, and I'm gonna go through it by columns. This is the eighth grade explore, and the different ranges of where they were performing. Then, if you move to the next column, you have North and South. This is just the number of students. So, I want to caution you, when you get to really low numbers, percentages can change dramatically from year to year and over time. Then, over here is the percent making the average district growth of 6.76 within these categories. So, the students that were really high, that came in with a 20 to 25, 73% at North made that growth, 80% in itself. The next column over is the average amounts of points of growth within that category of students. Then, you have the percent graduating with that college and career readiness at 20 or above, and then you have the average ACT composite score for each of these different bands. High schools are performing pretty similar. If you look at overall. Also, want to caution you, by definition, these students are the students that have been here from eighth grade on. So, when you look at the composite of what a school would have, this is only of our students that we've had since eighth grade to be able to draw those comparisons. So, it's a little higher than if you had all the mobility students, and that causes some of the difference in the graphs. Seeing some nice growth in that middle area, which is good to see. We're still kind of sporadic at the bottom with some of those bands. Also, the more prepared you can be at middle school for some of those really great foundational also leads to having more ability to have growth in high school. So, I want to make sure, as we talk, and I've spent a lot of time on high schools, getting students ready for the ACT is a K-12 issue. Every school's gotta be pulling together and getting those. It's not just what happens in high school.
Faith?
Yes.
So, we're moving to SAT.
Correct.
So, how are we going to look at the data and be able to determine, without waiting four years, how our students are doing?
So, there are lots of people working on correlations between ACT and SAT to be able to do that trend data. Julie, of course, is figuring that out too. But when those, when the state sets the SAT cut score, we will compare with other districts and look at what that correlation would be, so that we can have some of that trend data and not wait, you know, for years to be able to have the trend pieces. There's gonna be some difficulties with that, because there's different components of that test, but that is a priority of ours that we will figure out once we know what the state cutoff is.
Faith, I thought there was a matrix already in place, my experience, such that the SAT score is taken, and through really smart, intelligent algorithms, they can tie that right back to plus or minus a percentage uncertain to an ACT. I mean, I think students are going through that today when they give an SAT score now for application, but they can also relate an ACT equivalent based on this metrics. Is that a fair statement?
Right. You can get some of those components. Breaking it down into the specific areas becomes a little bit more tedious. Like, an overall composite to overall composite, there are those algorithms. But if you break it down into the different subcategories, it's not as clearly defined. Have some real celebrations for this slide. As you know, we added AP human geography. We've been talking a lot about how do we identify students that maybe weren't encouraged before to take AP tests. Last year, when this slide was up here, we had 41.1% of our students that had gotten at least a three or higher. So, we've managed to bring that up to 45.4. Then, really want to credit the high schools, and Julie, who's been working a lot on this. So, really excited about it, on the support systems that are put in place. We look forward to not only continuing to invite more students in, but the end goal is to have them pass and do well on that test, not just to have them in those classes. And we're not only increasing the number of students, but increasing the success rate Any questions on the data piece before I start talking about FIT?
Just let me go back to that. I might have missed what you just said on the last slide.
Sure.
So, this is the percentage of overall students?
This is the-
Or the percentage of those that have taken an AP?
This is the percentage of overall students.
So, do we have any idea of those students that take an AP exam? Will that percentage be, my guess is, a lot of it?
Yes, it is. I do not have that piece of data, but I can get it to you by tomorrow.
Right, it's fine.
Okay.
Faith, based on this-
More funding.
Institute with the Bridge Program, reported by high schools about three or four years ago, three years-
Three.
What sort of increase in enrollment have you seen, and then we can post it still, since we've started the Bridge Program?
We've at some of the levels, and it's a little difficult just to give you the overall number, because we've also added AP classes that weren't in existence before, but over 100 students more at each of the, at each of the high schools have been routinely taking AP classes.
So, one more question on reading. I've got a Facebook friend whom I've never met, who is maybe very smart and has students with dyslexia. So, can you talk a little bit about the professional development of those teachers, how we're assessing those students?
Sure. Sure. And that's a big part of our multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS, where we're identifying students early. And you'll, you'll see a little bit later in some of the student learning board rules, that we've adopted new assessments that we're using to identify students early on that are struggling in reading, and providing those students with services, whether they have dyslexia or some other disability that is causing that reading issue. Part of what a lot of students with dyslexia struggle with is the learning of phonics, because they weren't really reading the words correctly to begin with. And the reading interventions that we purchased this year for the upper grades, a lot of them have that tactile approach to learn phonics, where you have to, like, if the word is "sum," you tap out "sum" that have a tactile approach, which is a really good approach for students that are struggling, whether it was dyslexia or some other areas for that phonics piece. Our special education staff has addressed that issue, and while it's not a recognized disability, we do identify students that are in, are having difficulty reading their potential at reading level and provide supports.
And so, how, at what grade level or age are we even able to determine, you know, if there's that reading disability?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten, elementary?
Yep. We just got done doing a whole bunch of screener assessments in kindergarten. Now, we're not testing for reading at that point. We're testing for letter identification and letter sounds, but that building block of that piece and being able to see and interpret those letters starts at that early age.
Interviews and just district assessments for those that-
We are using district assessments, but we also purchased FastBridge, which is another data point that we are using, and then we have the state PITS assessment that also looks at those pieces. So, there's three pieces of data already for our kindergarten students.
How do we know, you know, so this is kind of a, it sounds like new software this year. How long is it gonna take for us to figure out if there's any meaningful results from this investment? And is it, can we tighten attention to this matter?
Sure. So, I can already answer that question. The principals and the psychologists are spending the morning with me Friday. We've already collected data on all of our students K through eight in reading and in math. And the data that's coming out of those math assessments is much more aligned with what the math coaches and I are working on than our old system of AIMS-WIP. You know it's a good test when the math coach is saying, "Well, maybe I won't have to do as much of my own assessment, because I got this data off of FastBridge." So, it's already giving us more usable data than our old system of AIMS-WIP. And then, this system is also allowing us to progress monitor more easily. So, all of our students that are in interventions are progress monitored every two weeks, and we're able to look at their progress and leave a team to see whether an intervention needs to be changed, or hopefully, they've caught up to grade level and can be returned. So, I can already tell you that investment is paying off, and we're paying less for it than we were our old assessment system to do the same thing.
Faith, our buildings went through the FastBridge assessment last week, didn't it?
Yes. Yes, they did. All the data was due yesterday, and I spent lots of time with our district psychologists working on it today. All right. Let's talk about FIT a little bit. As you recall, standards, mastery, and collaboration, the lighter grains, were the areas that we had worked on for the last couple of years. Last year, we worked at universal access and time and location. Also, worked on contextualized learning with all of our work around the new science standards. This year, we surveyed all the staff, looked at our classroom visits, looked at our data, and the decision was unanimous across the schools, to focus this year on differentiation, personalization, and individualization. And I want to talk a little bit about what those three terms mean. So, personalization, that side over there, is really when students are given choice, that they have a choice in how they're going to show their mastery, or they have a choice in the topic, or they have a choice in how they're going to learn. Example I use when I talk about it with elementary school, everybody's gonna learn their math facts. Some people, that's a time test. Other people, time test is the worst way to learn math facts. Other people are willing to learn it through games, being able to learn. I know some students that need to skip while they, while they learn that, and giving them the choice. It's not that they can choose. I can choose not to learn fractions. That's not an option. But you would have some choice in those matters. Then, if you move on the other side of that black bar, differentiation and individualization is when the teacher has looked at data, and the teacher has said, "I think you need some more practice," or "I think this topic would be really good for you." And differentiation is when that happens in a group, and individualization is when the teacher has said to each individual student, "This is what you need to progress and to work on." Daunting task for a lot of our teachers, and we've been putting in supports with math coaches and with Dreambox and through our reading framework to help this happen in reading and math. And you may say, "Well, why is the personalization component of that important?" That's my next slide. You think about the world in which the students are in. The Bitmojis are personalized. The Starbucks orders are personalized. The phones are all personalized. You can't then come to school and be like, "I have no choice." And actually, before Bitmojis and before Starbucks, personalized was still a pretty good thing. And there's lots of important people that are talking about that, but the most important people up here are the people that I interviewed last year. I did over 200 interviews with students in District 200 from fifth grade through high school, and talked with them about their learning environment, and what had an impact. Time and time again, they talked to me about, "Well, there was, there was this teacher that let us decide the class rules, and we kind of followed those rules better." There was a time where we got to decide a topic for the newspaper. There was a time where we got to, I remember, I got to learn as much as I wanted to on a particular topic. Personalized learning has a huge impact on students, and that is the area of the three: differentiation, personalization, and individualization. Personalization is where we need the most work in District 200, and we're making progress with that. Here's another reason why we are working on personalization. Spending a lot of time talking about resilience. I don't know if it's because it was after the referendum or what, but I spent a lot of summer time thinking about resilience and how do we build this with our students. And here's the top five that come from all different sources and research. And a lot of them make sense to me. Be optimistic, have a social network. The third one, I hadn't thought about as much. And we have to give students some control over their learning or their work in order for them to be able to regroup when it doesn't go well. For example, if a student follows everything that the teachers tell them all day, then they go to the coach, and they do everything the coach told them to do, and then they go home and they do everything the parents told them to do, and it didn't work. The natural reaction is to say, "Well, I'll sit here until someone else tells me something to do." But if I had some choice along the way, and I chose path A and it didn't get me there, maybe I want to look at path B. And that doesn't mean that we just let them play the law all the time, but they need to have some control and some choices in order to learn how they learn, and to be able to make some failures and some mistakes and be able to learn from those. I am closing my speech with all of the classroom teachers as I go on. We don't want to live 100% on this time, this part of the world, with differentiation, personalization, and individualization. with differentiation, personalization, and individualization all the time. We've got to have times in our classrooms that there's shared experiences, common discussions. We have to learn from one another. We have to be able to argue our point of view and be able to cite evidence. So, it can't all be warway all the time. It's a balance between those. All right. Questions FIT before I talk about school improvement? And I'm going old school. I do school improvement. Brain Research says that novelty is a great way to get your point across. I thought going old school would be great novelty. All right. So, school improvement. I want to tell you a story about how it's evolved in District 200. So, we have my department with data, and we have all the supports, and we have principals. Got to have a lot of data and a lot of communication to make that happen. But then, we added reading coaches. And it wasn't new people. I just redesigned their job a little bit. So, they were reading teachers, and they came and met with me, and we did reading coach support. Got them to have a lot of communication with me and with the principals, all about data to help push the staff. And now, we've added math coaches. And they meet with me every two weeks, and we talk about data, and we talk about professional development, and we talk about how we're going to communicate all of this back. And they have to go then meet with the principals. So, now the principals are getting a dose with me and Julie. They're getting a dose from the reading coaches. They're getting a dose from the math coaches. Then last year, we started talking about using the psychologists for our multi-tiered systems of support and meeting with us and having conversations about instruction and helping out with that. And that works with principals. It used to be that from here to here, the principals talked about the school improvement team. Now, we've also added FIT triads, where the LLC directors meet with me and with Lee and with Rod. But we also have a classroom teacher on that group, and these people are now talking about FIT and meeting with me and talking about it. And these weren't new hires, with the exception of math coaches. We just redesigned their job a little bit. And what this may have happened is the school improvement team is now those people plus some classroom teachers. And the synergy around professional development and data and communication is really exponential on the instruction and the professional development that we're doing. So, this model that I showed you is elementary. Middle schools have assistant principals that we're meeting with. We're starting to work with their reading teachers to create some of the same richness of conversation and teaming. Because the principal used to didn't have anybody to talk to him about all this stuff, other than calling me, calling Julie, calling other people. Now, and all of these people are super invested in driving just their schools forward. So, I wanted you to know just a little bit about how the school improvement team and process has changed. I don't know what that is. But as you can see, communication, data, trust, and what we try to get right is that balance between autonomy at the school level and the district. Each school can go off and do their own thing, but each school is really different. Their demographics are different. Their teachers are different. So, we have to provide some autonomy with that. And we say the same thing with the school improvement plan. Everybody's got to do this, but your grade level may be different. So, there needs to be teacher autonomy, and teachers have different styles. So, we have to be working on the same thing, but still allow people's individual talents to come through. Now, we're talking about what do we hold tight at classroom level and still have student autonomy at level as well. All right. Now, we'll go back to the board goals on student learning. And I just wanted to highlight a few of the things that are on here. I won't read them all to you, but it is in your packet. The very first one is going through and meeting with principals in small groups. And we have them meet this year from middle and elementary so that there's more conversation from elementary to middle and all the feeder schools. I am on my 11th meeting with individual principals as well to go over their school improvement plans. If you turn the page, at the very top, was talking about the new FastBridge system. That's the new assessment system that we put in place to identify students per week. There'll be quite a bit of training on that, and then that assessment is given three times a year to identify students and also to do progress monitoring. If you skip down to September 22nd, we just had an institute day on Friday, and the whole topic in the afternoon was differentiation, personalization, and individualization. And my department created what the staff had said that they wanted. We had K-1, 2 teachers need different things and want different things in the upper grades. The K-1, 2 teachers wanted to get together and have face-to-face time. Grades three through eight, like can you create online stuff for us to work on and be able to do all of that? So, my department created online learning experiences that people could choose their topics from to be able to go and work on what they chose to. And then grade one and two came, and they had choices in face-to-face sessions to work on. We had grade reviews from that training, because it was personalized with choice and was also differentiated to meet their needs. Some of the other new things that are on here is that Dan Corntor is going to be working with looking at some courses to be able to have some options of face-to-face and some that are online, so that we can look at that flexibility level to give students some more choice in how they would take a particular class. And we'll be bringing you updates as that happens. And then, I also wanted to highlight, the training was coming up on October 13th, because we have a new software system there that will help all of our principals and teams track this process called MTSS, where we're identifying students, notifying parents, putting them into interventions early on, tracking the progress, and then seeing whether those interventions are working or not because of this system. And because we've really gotten better and detailed on interventions, I'll be able to look across and look at the students in the different interventions and determine which was the most effective of the interventions, so that we can expand that later on. Also, some other new work that's going to be happening is I'm going to be meeting with the middle school reading teachers to bring in more of this approach to the middle school level for school improvement. And then, part of every K-8 principal's evaluation is me walking their classrooms with them and talking about those classrooms as we come out. A second piece is going to be related to a conversation about MTSS and how they're doing on managing not only core instruction, but all of those interventions, and how special education plays into that as well. We started that last year. We're taking it up a notch on what the expectations are for this year. Then the last thing that I want to highlight is what Lee and the rest of the ESD team is going to do to personalize professional development. Now, I don't know if you guys have been here when Lee has done her workouts and brings in people, and there's music, and there's costumes, and there's all kinds of- People love that. But it's on the topics that we chose. And what we're encouraging these teams of people to do is get better at identifying what their school needs. And then, Lee and Julie and the rest of my staff and I will be taking that same amount of money that we used to spend on guest teachers, to bring them here, and instead of giving them that flexibility to use the guest teacher time back at their buildings, and we're bringing the training to them and personalize them for what they think they need at their building level. Rod's been having some of those conversations, too, as we go around. To have this group have that resource and really own what they want to work on and be invested in it is really going to make a powerful impact.
Faith, I was looking over the students that are learning goal and nail and stuff. And I totally understand why we have MTSS to identify those students that are struggling and interviewed, and we have to personalize their education. Does, it's a two-part question. Does MTSS also address those students who are excelling and then giving them an opportunity to really excel in a particular area? Resources are limited, but what can we do for those students that are excelling?
That are excelling? MTSS itself does not. That's why we have FIT. And we push that to that level, and we keep track of the data to be able to look at that. Some of the exciting developments for those students that are above this year due to the Student Excellence Foundation grants that we brought, our gifted teachers are going on a conference and are being charged for bringing that back, that learning back with the staff. Also, our gifted coordinator spent a lot of time on her own this summer coordinating math activities that will not all be used with PACE students at the elementary level, but a lot of our elementary teachers spent Friday afternoon looking through those. They are already ready-made to go math extension activities for those students that are at the high level of that. With our reading framework, the way that we work that in elementary school, a portion of the day has to be at a student's level of their text. So, not everybody's reading the same book. Not everybody's reading the same material. So, that, even our top students, we want to continue to see them grow as well. And the teachers look at that data, too.
All right. Again, so personalized learning, that's one of our big areas of focus that we're saying where we get the most work. How do we, how do we measure whether we're having success and having impact? It seems like something that you can't really measure with an assessment.
And that is one of the challenges that I have this year. A couple of things, and I don't have an answer for you yet, but here are some of the things that I'm looking into. There are some surveys, some different ways to do interviews that you can have an impact on getting the students' opinions and reactions and to see whether those grow or not. You are going to see the more that we personalize, a higher impact on student achievement that will show up on test scores, but I won't necessarily be able to say that was because of personalized learning, and that was because of the intervention program, and that was because, because it's all going to be for the same measurement. We will continue to do what we've done with the staff, is, you know, have your work in this area caused an increase in student life. So, we'll have that staff perspective. But I'm still struggling and looking for a way to see how we, how do you quantify that personalized learning? Definitely, when I go around and visit classrooms and do observations, and the principals make observations, we can tell whether that has increased. But that would be more narrative and story than it would be, I can say this percentage of classrooms has moved.
And I'm not asking a question because I'm questioning that. I mean, I'm a huge proponent of personalized learning. I just, I don't know if it's student engagement and the particular task, but I know a lot of school districts are talking about that and just struggle with, how are we going to figure out if we made it? I mean, we're never going to make it. I understand that.
Right.
But how are we going to figure out if we're having an impact?
I think a lot of it is student perspective and student engagement and how they're feeling about instruction. It's hard to ask the first grader that, but it's not so hard once they get to fourth or fifth grade.
And what are we doing in terms of educating parents and community on these endeavors that we're going forth with? I think it's a very different kind of learning than what they used to.
All right. A lot of the communication on those pieces is still on the principal level. I have attempted, not recently, but like, "Hey, come listen to Faith talk about..." And they don't, parents don't know me. They're not going to come out to do that. But their principal gets up and talks about that. A great example, I was just sitting with Chris Salagi earlier, and he's put out a whole brochure on both mindset and personalized learning and is talking about that with his parents. So, I think that that's more communication from staff and teachers and the principal. You know me, I'd love to give a session, but we'd get people to come and to be able to talk about that. I know that we updated our FIT webpage on the website so that people could find out more about what that looks like. But I'm still looking for an avenue to reach more people.
So, I'm thinking, if we're moving toward a redefine-ready kind of approach, we need to better explain how we're not just looking at a test score anymore and how these pieces play out. I think that somehow we need to get that communication out there, whether it's, you know, maybe one principal is doing a great job with it, and maybe we should kind of push that out in other venues, not just for just that school to be able to-
Right. We can try through those different avenues. I just put something together for a TED Talk yesterday, so if that works well, maybe that video can be used with other, you know, with other places. It'll have to come from multiple sources to get the word out. Maybe an example of PTA meeting you have to start would be a good avenue. It's good thoughts, because we had to make sure everybody understands that the world's changed.
Faith, thank you very much.
Thanks.
The next item on agenda are board reports, Dr. Chu.
Yeah. So, under board reports, we just wanted to address the balance of the board goals. Faith already addressed the student learning goal. I'm going to turn it over to Joanne Panopoulos, who I'm going to let me, a couple of comments about the social-emotional learning goal. So, the board, through previous conversation, really had prioritized three key areas of focus this year. Obviously, FIT, our learning environment, progress of our students will always remain a top priority goal area. Social-emotional learning was a second area that we're going to address. And then, the third being continued focus around master facility work. So, Joanne, you want to start?
Sure. So, social-emotional learning in terms of the goal this year. In the past, we've been working on social-emotional learning, you see, through grade 12 for the past four years specifically. And starting with our staff, we're really working with understanding the five areas, five competencies. And we've been taking that into the classroom. Bill has been doing a fabulous job of incorporating it within our FIT. And now, we're at the point where we want to be explicit with teaching specifically the SCL standards. And so, what that means is in 2018, '19, the goal is for our staff to be implementing social-emotional learning through the standards. That means this year, this goal and work plan focuses on the stuff needed to take in order to get there. So, if you look at the indicators and accomplishments, for the most part, what we'll be doing is establishing what those standards are going to be per grade levels. We have an SCL design team that's going to be looking at materials, looking at evidence-based materials and resources that can support SCLs with teaching for each of those grade levels. Buildings will have input as to which materials they'd like to use in order to address those standards. We'll also be working behind the scenes and identifying a professional development plan that can support the SCL standards for each of those grade levels. In addition, we'll be also looking at communicating the plan that we'll be using for those materials within the standards. And with that, will be another piece in terms of measuring SCL. And that's always an area that a lot of school districts are still working towards, because measuring SCL can be very different based on either the evidence-based programming that's being used in schools or some of the screeners that may be already used within school districts. And so, as Faith had mentioned earlier about the whole MTSS process, you know, looking at some screeners that can help support that SCL is one area which we're looking. But also, looking at the materials that we choose and seeing what kind of measurement tools that could be included in that. And lastly, looking at a district measurement tool, similar to what we've been doing thus far, which is looking at our attendance data, potentially continually looking at our suspension data, referral data, things of that nature, in addition to potential climate surveys. So, overall, this year will be a plan year, which will get all those pieces underway. And the intent, again, is for the start of next year, '18, '19, to be explicit with SCL standards in all of our grades.
Any questions or comments from board members?
Okay. So, the third goal area in your packet, then, is the focus around continuing our work on facilities. The board, at the end of last year and into this school year, prioritized three components within our master facility plan that you wanted to focus on. One being to find a long-term solution for our early learning center need. That's been an area that we have talked about for quite a while in District 200 and remains a top priority area. Two being to address the- Two being to address the secure entry needs from the April referendum plan. We had seven buildings that had a need identified for a secure entry improvement, and so the board continued to make that a priority area. And then, three, addressing the needs that were identified in the capital improvement plan. So, the board's capital improvement plan addresses the physical needs and conditions of our buildings, so roofs, mechanical systems, all of the infrastructure to the buildings itself, and those continue to be the three areas of focus. The facilities committee has already recommended to the board that we do move forward on developing a plan for the secure entries to be completed next summer, and so we're still fleshing out, finalizing some of the plans and the related costs associated with that. The board's facility committee has narrowed the focus around early learning center. We've obviously talked and shared with the public more recently, an option that's being considered that would locate that next to Monroe Middle School. But again, I just want to remind the board, certainly remind anybody that's at the meeting, there was certainly another option in the options list that talked about that facility being located next to the existing site, the existing Jefferson site. And so, I think in our timeline, our goal is to get the decision finalized in a timeframe that would allow us to get that project out to bid so that ideally it can begin in the summer of 18 with a goal of being able to have a facility complete by the 2019 school year. The finance committee obviously has been working on the finance elements related to that, and I think has come to a recommendation that they brought to the board around using a combination of fund balance and there's some debt certificate, lease certificate option that would pay those costs out of fund balance moving forward. So, we've continued to move certainly that discussion forward. The third piece is that the board's facility committee did prioritize some work from the capital improvement plan. So, when you take the work related to Jefferson, to our current early learning center out, we also had about $3.2 million worth of condition one, year one, needs or priorities that the facility committee has also recommended that we move forward with developing plans for next summer to complete that work. But what that still leaves in the goal area obviously is a need to address the balance of that work within the capital improvement plan in April. As we were talking about the need, we were looking at about $84 million worth of work that needs to be addressed in the coming years. And so, well, we've taken, I think, a good first step in terms of prioritizing and getting some solutions in place. Obviously, the board and the facility committee are going to still need to have a lot of discussion around what is the long-term plan around addressing the capital improvement plan. Taken a good first step, but we need to finalize a long-term solution. So, as I was looking at, I think, the work plan and process on that, that issue of the long-term solution around the capital plan, I think, is missing from the series of steps. And so, again, I just want to remind the board when I ask you to take any action on the goal plans this evening, this was the continuation of the process. I think based on your feedback, we would bring these goal plans for approval at your October meeting, but that is the one element that I think we still need to add to the facility goal is certainly finalizing or looking at the long-term strategy around how we're going to address the capital plan, which is clearly a big need. So, questions from board?
Can you explain with the lease certificate, since we would not own the building, are there any limitations to that or issues related to that? You know, can somebody who's the owner of the building terminate our lease or anything like that? No?
No, and Mr. Fraley, weigh in on this if you've got any different thought. The mechanic of that funding option, whether it's a debt certificate, lease certificate, really are not substantially different. So, the lease certificate doesn't put that building at risk of somebody being able to recapture or take that facility back unless, of course, the board is not making that payment in a future year. Obviously, if you became obviously delinquent on that obligation, that's a different issue, but there's no additional risk. And again, as we've talked about that option with Bob Lewis from PMA, cost of issuance, very similar, interest rate on the principal, very similar across those two options. It's just a slightly different legal process in terms of lease versus debt certificate.
It also depends, I think, on public perception difference also to go on, a lease certificate would be for the building, right? As opposed to an addition on the existing building. I think, you know, one thing that we would have to be considering is the perception from the community that we've gone to a rough run two times or gone once and then included a new building in another rough run and then, oh, you're going to go through it anyway. That's something that would concern me that's not a legal issue or a financial issue, just a different perspective that I think has to be made as well. And the other comment I have on the facilities plan, I think on the board education, this is small, Board of Education Committee, we put the finance committee on there also, these two committees are continuing to work closely together. It's not just a necessity issue.
The student learning goal, the Dan Parton should be on the implementers, these are against the high school, the team as well. Any other questions, comments from board members? Hearing none. We now move to public comments. The opportunities to speak with board is provided for members of the public with a question or comment on an agenda item. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the district, and public input in a variety of venues is very helpful. The board must protect the civility and the forum of meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board, the democratic process, and the comments tonight. Please use that microphone, state your name, and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please be factual and courteous and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. If you feel a matter needs to be discussed in more detail, please attend the board's chance to chat, present your comments to us in writing. And the first person I have signed up for public comments is Gary Jones. Mr. Jones?
Karaoke man. Karaoke man. My name's Gary Jones. I'm at 309 Burridge Drive in Wheaton. I'm actually a lifelong resident of Wheaton and a lifelong resident of 309 Burridge Drive. So, I grew up playing in Graf Park, actually played there when it was Mr. Graf's field and there was a lot of us there, but we survived that. Many years later, my daughter, who's 10, plays in Graf Park with her friends, and so, like many people here, this issue about the early learning center is near and dear to my heart. I would like to stand up here and present you with a lot of facts, bullet points, charts, and whatnot, but the fact is, we don't have a whole lot of facts in front of us yet. But having said that, I will say that if this plan goes through at Graf Park/Monroe, it will irreversibly change the character of our neighborhood, and I believe for the There'll be a loss of contiguous green space, which is extremely, at an extreme priority in Wheaton. It's kind of at a premium, and there will be an increase in traffic. And again, I don't have a traffic study to back that up, but that's my firm opinion. These could possibly lead to lower home values, but as a father of a tenured, the increased traffic is the biggest issue for me. Jefferson and Monroe's Lextra Park have vastly different traffic profiles. There are really not that many, I would call, natural pedestrians around Jefferson, and that's evidenced by the fact that there's only one sidewalk there on the south side of Manchester. Jefferson is bordered by businesses on the west, kind of an already semi-busy street, Hazleton. On the far south, there's a few backyards, and then on the north is unoccupied county fairgrounds. Graf Park is surrounded by school, totlot, and residential homes. Secondly, there's just a multiple number of more pedestrians around Graf Park than there are Jefferson, just simply because it's surrounded by homes and schools. So, I think no matter what the board does or the traffic study shows, no matter what safety things that they would put in place, I think, no matter what happens there, there will be an increase in traffic, and that will therefore lower the safety profile, not only for just our neighborhood, but for Wheaton as a whole. So, I would just urge that, or respectfully urge, the board members to take all this into consideration when they're concerned with this plan. Appreciate it, thank you. Oh, and I am a big, huge fan of District 200, I'm a product of 200, and my daughter's doing very well, so you guys are doing an awesome job, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. The next speaker I have is Jackie Zerowski.
Yeah, you did, yeah, Zerowski. And I apologize, speaking is not something that I normally volunteer to do, so a little nervous about it. But in regards to the Early Learning Center, I did want to first call out that I had a brother with, who was very medically fragile and severely disabled, and I, in looking at the list of the facility challenges, I'm a little taken aback and horrified that there's no central air and that we're in Wheaton, a pretty affluent community, and it's 2017, and that's still a problem that's based, and that it's taken this long for this to be something that's looked at. So, I more than understand the need for updates here, and, you know, I know I looked at that preschool for my children and it was a very high cost, and I'm surprised that some of that, I'm going to fixing that. That said, Graf Park is not the answer. Graf Park is, you know, Gary kind of mentioned, is a treasure to the community. From Go Fly a Kite Day to watching the fireworks and the sporting events that occur, it's huge, not just in our own neighborhood, but for all of Wheaton and even around, I know people from Carroll Street that come to Graf Park to watch the fireworks in Wheaton, and it's a very beloved park. It also, the contiguous green space that Gary mentioned before me is so important as a parent's. I mean, I have children that use the playground right now, and I see at the sporting events, the parents that have kids in the sporting events and their younger siblings who have no interest in watching a whole sporting game, they're able to play in the totlot, and the parents can watch both of them at the same time, or both sets, versus if fields were moved to behind Jefferson, you can't have younger kids crossing Manchester and trying to watch them both at the same time. Overall, as it stands now, with the field and the playground and all the area, it is very family-friendly. You know, there's also things like, you mentioned Go Fly a Kite, that I just don't see being able to happen if the land was swapped at that location. In looking at the proposed mapping of it to, you know, the traffic, but it looks like you've got the playground with four paths for cars all around it, from parking lot to a throughway between the schools to a driveway to Manchester. And if anyone has, you know, has parents with small kids, that just seems so scary to me. I have three, and they all go in different directions. And so, watching them in a park, and there's four surrounding sides where cars can come through, that's a little scary to me in being able to watch them and make sure they're all playing safely at the park. I think, you know, overall, Graf Park is just such a huge part of Wheaton overall and this area of the neighborhood that I really, really just urge you and, you know, plead to please choose another method, use the land behind Jefferson to build a new building or refurbish, just please leave Graf Park as it is.
Thank you, Ms. Zerowski. The next speaker I have is Diane Nelson.
Hello, I live at 315 Westwood Drive, which is the street east of Graf Park. Fifteen years ago, when my husband and I were looking for a home, we were in Winfield. That's the neighborhood we found because of Graf Park, because of the school district, of course. And our feeling is that definitely our home values will be affected by losing this green space. You know, I just, I love Monroe being a block from my home, but I would like another family, you know, in the near future, to be able to enjoy what we've enjoyed all of this time. And just knowing my kids are safe, just walking back and forth, if they forget something, they can come back home and go back and play their sports or go to a concert or whatever they're doing. And then also, my husband couldn't be here, but he wanted me to just throw out the whole thought of Graf, the Graf family donating this property to us. I mean, what a gift that they were able to, you know, do such a wonderful thing. And when we learned that, when we moved in and we heard about the 99 years, that nothing could happen to this property, that it would stay like that, so families could enjoy it for, you know, future generations. And I'm not sure the legalities of the 99-year promise, but I would like to pursue that, and I think that should be up for discussion. You know, 43 years ago is when they donated it, so there should be plenty more time that we can enjoy that facility. So, I would vote for another area for the Early Childhood School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Nelson. Next speaker I have is Chris Evert, Central.
Yeah, that's me. Yes, thank you. My name is Chris Evert. I live at 314 Westwood Drive. First of all, I just want to start off by saying I really do appreciate all the work that all of you do. I believe wholeheartedly in the education system. I really want you to know that because I really do. But I would like to talk about the land swap. I am concerned about that plan. In particular, I know that we're all talking, or I've heard it said, that, you know, the five, four and a half acres of the park, it's only taking four and a half acres of the park, that's what I hear. But this is something where, you know, like we were talking about, it contiguous a large green space. This four and a half acres is a key part of this park. Taking that four and a half acres really changes the value, the inherent value, and fundamentally alters this park. Graf is not a neighborhood park, it's a regional park. It's a park that people come from miles away to enjoy because it's large, because it's quiet, and it because it provides an escape from an otherwise increasingly being developed or increasingly developed being. People in this neighborhood, and I'm not just talking about the immediate neighbors, I'm talking way all the way out to Roosevelt though, you know, extending a long distance of both sides, live in this neighborhood because of this park. It's a place for families to play with their kids, I think we've all, we've heard enough, or we've heard people talking about that, your walking, jogging, biking. We just had a new pathway, a walking pathway installed in the park just last summer. The Park District is doing a beautiful job, great job of maintaining this. The location of this park is central. If you look around, there aren't other parks in the area. The Park District recently moved into one of the other parks that was, was there, I think, recent 10 years ago, but my point is, there's not a lot of other parks. It is the park for the area. I would just like to encourage the school district to think about this, too, because, you know, I think, you know, going through the referendums and I think everyone's aware that this is a time that the school needs to be building trust with the community, and this is something, this park affects a lot of people. It's not just immediate neighbors that this affects, and that's something that, you know, I think it does the opposite of building trust with the community. the community. If it comes down to Engraft Park and Jefferson, there's a lot more people affected by Engraft I would also just like to point out that I don't believe that the referendums, the failed referendums that didn't go through, were a reflection on this particular site, that it wasn't related to the site of Jefferson that people were rejecting. It was cost, and it was an issue of trust. And so, I just want to bring that up, because I heard that mentioned here today, that, you know, that it was rejected at that location, but I think it was for other reasons and not because of that. But I would just say in closing, like, to reiterate my support for the school district. The work you guys are doing is important. I live in Wheaton, I'm proud to live in a town that has good schools. So, I want you to know that I support that, that I support you, but I, but please don't take the part.
Thank you, Mr. Ebert. The next speaker I have is Andrea Rosedale.
Hi. I typically expect to speak, because I signed in on that sheet, but, I live on Manchester Road, and I'm a graduate of District 200, and I work for District 200, and two children in District 200, and very disappointed with the idea of the park being taken away. When we bought the house, we loved the park, and we didn't know Manchester was a busy street, the bridge was closed, actually, when we put our contract out in our house. So, the idea that it's going to be busier is crazy. Our kids are always there, the park is always littered with people, and I know that Jefferson needs to be updated, but this isn't the right plan. I hope that you guys consider a different plan for a particular park.
Thank you. Laura Cantinelli.
Hi, my name is Laura, and I'm a resident on South Beverly, actually just one block from the current site of Jefferson, and I'm a mom of a young family. And first of all, I wanted to thank you, the board and school officials, for your hard work, for educating our kids, ensuring them, nourishing them, and also for your perseverance in really meeting the community need of our young learners of all abilities, that is extremely important, and for your perseverance with the funding not being passed, but you're continuing to move forward to try and provide for the kids, is wonderful. Our schools are one of our priceless assets of our community, it draws people here and keeps people here, and our perks are one of our priceless assets of our community, they draw people here and they keep people here. My main concern is that I feel that the land swap is not just an equitable one. In the spirit the land was given, it was meant to be an open public park. As others who spoke before me have mentioned, it is a regional park, it serves a large community area in Wheaton, not just a few residents, but a very large area, and people from even farther come for specialized sports and very special events. We are, they're almost daily. The sense of the integrity of the contiguous green space is very important, it provides hours and hours of healthy outdoor activities for our citizens, everything from young ones on the playlot, moving on to pickup games, watching older kids play ball, people walking their dogs, flying kites, watching the trains, being able to then move on to join to other areas. Wheaton, the Curry Path and Lincoln Marsh is a priceless asset, and I believe it was given to be maintained as a priceless asset. And I would really love the board to consider rebuilding Jefferson at its current site on land that already belongs to the school board, and would not require a land swap. Again, as I mentioned, I don't consider that to be a truly just and equitable swap. I do not see any other large community area of Wheaton being asked to make the same sacrifice that we are in our community area. Thank you.
Thank you. David Johns.
Thank you. I'm David Johns, I live Hickory Lane, near the park. Spoke to you Superintendent Schuber today, so thank you for the callback. Just to say, I, we, our family supports District 200, we've got three kids that are in or have been in the, through the school system, and they're doing great. My daughter's at Northwestern, so you guys are doing a great job with our students. Our family definitely supports doing something, finding the right solution for Jefferson, but as many of our neighbors here have indicated, what the proposal is with Engraft Park is not a workable solution for many of us. It's really a park that many of our neighbors enjoy using. We did lose a park recently, east of us on Manchester, well, within the past 10 years, so losing another park like Engraft would be quite impactful to our community. So, I do promote a solution for Jefferson, I think the right solution is rebuilding where it currently resides, so I'm happy that you guys are considering and hearing us today, and I appreciate your leadership on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker I have signed up is Dan Lodes.
Andrea told me to sign up, so I don't have to talk either. Thank you, Andrew. I have a whole lot planned, but I guess, to kind of reiterate what other people have said, we live on 112 Manchester Road, it's right down the street, we do spend a lot of time at that park. We do notice that that park will be surrounded on all three sides, I'd put all foursized by parking lots and from traffic, that does concern us. But I think the biggest thing is, what John before me had said, was cost and trust, and I think those are the two things that the community and the school, the school board really need to, the value, and that is one of the things that my referendums didn't pass originally, and I think one of the things that concerns me is when looking at the plans that we considered, they're all different locations, they're all about the same cost target. And I think, what would have been more encouraging maybe looking at, people may not have been concerned more where it was, it was more the cost of it, and I guess I'd like to see someone to focus more on that. And then additionally, I just feel that looking at the benefits of the proposed methods of planning Engraft Park, I don't see any that wouldn't be addressed by looking at Jefferson. The one thing I thought was the debt certificates, but talking today, it doesn't seem like it's a big issue between the debt and these certificates there. And I know you had mentioned, I thought, you know, the public perception of building, a new building as opposed to an expanded building, but I think the public would appreciate a new building that didn't, wasn't expansion of a new, of the city. They'd appreciate a new building more than they would appreciate the expansion of a building that also is sort of, and I think probably would be much more, would notice that much more, and also be, I guess, much more angry about that, and much more feel the effects of that. And so, you know, as far as the traffic, the green space, things of that nature, I feel like all those can be addressed at Jefferson, there would be issues at Engraft Park. And just hearing everybody speak, Engraft Park holds a dear place in all of our hearts, and to see that go, I think, you know, talk monetary value, I think that that's much more valuable than you could put cost on it. Thank you.
The last individual I have signed up is Aaron Rosedale. He's, Aaron's welcome to speak, but Andrea, Aaron Rosedale's here, I don't know if Aaron signed up, but Andrea asked him to sign up.
He's on.
Okay.
Well, there'd be more opportunity to speak, I wasn't aware of the sign-up sheet, and I want a chance to speak per open meetings rules and regulations.
Well, if you lose your public comments, two minutes, identify yourself.
Maybe three minutes, of course.
Identify yourself for the record, and with the registered president.
Yes. Well, my name is Mark Kmetrich, I live on Hazelpin, I'm in that neighborhood there. I'm a resident for over 35 years in Wheaton, and I will address a couple of issues first. Mr. Chris Ackert, is your name? I'm sorry, Eword. He talked about one issue is trust. I've been around a long time and I've seen the school board, what they've done in the past. Example, that picture there, the golden arches, okay, I remember that controversy, that the superintendents and all this, controversies, and we can go on and on and on, but it's an issue of trust, and how money is spent, how things are done, how things are planned. The community does not trust you, that's why the referendum lost. Whether the money was justified needed or that, the argument was an issue of trust. Now, when it comes to this, Engraft Park was given to the city by the Engraft family to be in perpetuity for 99 years as a park. Now, they're going to be building a 43,000 square foot, I guess according to newspaper, Daily Herald, a facility. Now, this is a very bad idea, because this is a wonderful park. I have used the park, friends might have used the park, it's the only park in the west district, in the west part of that, and why should our community be sacrificing this asset, this wonderful asset, just because, well, we need it? Now, there are other solutions, Jefferson problem, it has to be taken care of, I appreciate that, I really do, but there are other solutions, and this is not one of them, to do this land swap, as the other lady said, this is not an equitable swap. This is not a one-for-one, and I am not very happy, and this should not be done, because by humble opinion, it's a bad idea. And I appreciate you listening to my comments, and you have a fine evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kmetrich. That ends the public comments, we have signed up.
Excuse me. Public comments can go on for a reasonable amount of time per Illinois policy. If other people wish to speak, I move that they're allowed to speak in this particular venue, because it gives them a chance to speak to the public officials.
I gave you an accommodation, sir, so I think we have a sign-up sheet that was out there.
I don't want to argue in that sense.
Okay, we had that problem over at C O D when they start playing the game here, so I don't want this.
It's not a game, the sign-up sheet is out there, this is the procedure we follow.
I wasn't aware of it, so the, there was no.
This is the procedure we follow on every board, and please let me finish.
Well, I'm a new, I'm new to this game here, as far as here is concerned. So, I'm just asking, it should have been presented more clearly so people walked in.
Mr. Roman, can I, can I make just a suggestion? So, I'm not sure why we're arguing over this. Are there others that wish to speak? I don't think anybody from the board has said they're not willing to hear public comment. The rules that I think were articulated are the rules that are in board policy, the rules we follow at every meeting, so we're not altering from that, but I, but I don't think the board is diversity hearing from anybody else. Is there anybody else that wishes to?
Ma'am, would you like to speak?
I just had a quick question.
Oh, please.
With you saying that, though, please, please know you probably won't get an answer directly from the board to your question, but we'll be happy to provide it for you.
If you would, please identify yourself for the record.
I'm good.
Sandy Larson.
Okay.
Sandy Larson, 1621 Beechtree Avenue in Wheaton. I just had one quick question. You had an elaborate blueprint of everything for Engraft Park. Did you have another blueprint of another option? Because you were telling us you had other options, and I wondered if there were blueprints that you had made up for other options, or are you set on Engraft Park?
That would be having a follow-up.
Thank you. I appreciate your work also.
Having said that, is there anyone else who would like to speak? We're about to move into closed session. The closed session is for the purpose of discussing the climate, climate compensation, district performance, dismissal, specific beliefs of the public body, of legal counsel for the public body, including during testimony on the content lodged against the employer of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body, determined of validity, pursuant to five I L C S 120 slash two, so fair and fair, one. No action is expected following the closed session. May I have a motion and second to adjourn the closed session?
So.
Move on, Mrs. Erickson.
A second, second.
Second.
I was, you're still on.
Second, Mr. Gambiani, Mrs. Hutcherson, if you wish, follow the law.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes, the motion to adjourn the closed session.